What are you doing to protect my daughters and every LCPS student from being sexually assaulted at school? You allowed a student who's currently charged with sexually assaulting a girl to be quietly transferred to another school, the same high school my twin daughters attend. Why wasn't he moved to Virtual Loudoun or the Douglas Alternative High School? Why wasn't he expelled? What other crimes are you people hiding? Why did you put my daughters and every 14- to 18-year-old girl at Broad Run at risk of being sexually assaulted? I would like someone here to please help me understand what policies allowed this to happen and put my daughters in harms way. It was your responsibility under Title IX to protect these girls. How do you respond? I'm sure the girls in LCPS are listening. Do you people even have a moral compass? Resign before you face a federal indictment.
Elizabeth Perrin.
My road to being labeled a domestic terrorist started by asking for schools to open in the mental health of our children. We talked about mental health and suicide rates. You posted selfies and created hit lists. We were outraged at the pornography and the books being assigned to our students and openly discussing violent sexual behavior. What could go wrong with that, huh? Your response was to take them out of middle schools and purchase even more offensive material. You orchestrated chaos and demanded parents be arrested and then had the animus to have us labeled as domestic terrorists. We opposed AD-40 not because we're transphobic, but because we were worried about our children. We were worried about both the boys and the girls being exposed to other sexes in their bathroom and in their locker room. We were concerned about the safety of our children. Beth, you ask if students were regularly raped at LCPS. Mr. Ziegler?
Shelley Slavich.
You would think after all these years you would know how to say my name. I'm your constituent. I was told I can't get your newsletter because LCPS... Oh, Jesus, don't look at her like that. Because LCPS policy says I don't have a child in this school system. All of you, we are your constituents. Every single one of you make a decision that affects us. Mr. Ziegler, please look up and listen. What is wrong with you people? Oh my God. You made these decisions. We are mad because of you. You put a report from 2016 from The Times that affected us about transgenders. Is that when you picked out how many students would be enrolled this year? Because your information is old. But you're spending $3.8 million to update this building for security that my cane didn't go off on when I came in. You need to protect your students. Beth says you don't. You do. When your daughter is raped and it is you, you'll want protection in the schools. Put that money into the regular schools, not into the admin building.
Monica Sardigie. I signed up to speak today with the intention of questioning how this board was going to address the widespread learning loss that the pandemic has cast upon so many LCPS students, my son included. However, with the recent news regarding LCPS and sexual assaults at school, that topic needs to be addressed. How do you expect parents across this county to drop their children off at school and trust you all to keep them safe when you have shown on more than one occasion you are not up for the job? I am disgusted looking back at the school board meeting on the 22nd, knowing what I know now. The meeting was purposely stopped prior to Mr. Smith being able to address the board. Pictures of Mr. Smith were then circulated nationwide under a false narrative. You all know what happened in this room. I do too. Dr. Ziegler and Mrs. Jones then lied about the assaults happening at LCPS and the entire board stayed silent. Every single one of you should be ashamed of yourselves. My hope for the families of the victims is true justice. It will not change what happened to their daughters, but it may stop it from happening again. I hope it does.
Erin Roselle Ho.
School board members, email after email, I have waited for a response. Silence is all I get in return. I have provided a copy for you today. I have stood here to advocate for education and still nothing changes. What I have seen is a decline in LCPS schools across the county. Students fighting students, teachers fighting students, sexual assaults, drug overdoses, the list continues to grow. Our county is falling apart due to these policies and procedures. Apparently, education doesn't mean going to school anymore. Now your mandates. Why? What financial gains will this county receive because of them? Are you okay with losing good teachers? Are you okay with taking away opportunities from our athletes? I once had hoped that this board would look at our community with some truth and some grace. I'm sadly mistaken. There are inequities in our community, however, they are here because of your actions and not of those of your constituents.
Carrie Michonne.
Unisex restrooms in our schools do not have to be a part of diversity and equity. This is not about inclusion. It's toxic activism. The AD-40 policy was rushed through to a vote without consideration for the safety of all students, simply to satisfy a political agenda. A policy that you knew full well could allow our children to be abused inside our schools. At least two young women are recent victims of sexual assaults in our high schools, one of those occurring in a restroom. Your moral compasses are busted. You, Dr. Ziegler, and our school board, every one of you, are complicit in these crimes against our children because you did nothing about it. Nothing. Rape, inappropriate touching, grooming, et cetera, and you do nothing except for move people around and wait for the next victim. No firing, no expulsions. You buried a rape prior to passing AD-40 so that your policy wouldn't be affected. And surprise, it happened again and you did nothing. So tonight you should resign, every one of you.
Brandon Michonne.
I'd like to see an update to the COVID testing protocol if kids go to the nurse or the health center at the schools. There's actually no consistency throughout the county. At my child's school, if you go and the child says, "I have a headache and a stomach ache," the parents have to come and take the children as well as their siblings out of school, go get a test. Those tests aren't readily available. You have to drive all over the county to get them just to come back and prove a negative test. I would ask that we spend some of the money within the budget or within PPP or any other government programs to provide the testing kits to the nurses so that they can do these rapid tests and get the kids better qualifications that they don't have COVID. And if they do, they can actually send them home. It's inefficient for parents, it's inefficient for the children, and it's also not fair to the families who are burdened with the inability to get out of work and/or the cost of going in these tests. So I would highly encourage a discussion around this topic and it would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Michael Rivera.
Let's make a list of all the violent and sexual behavior in our Loudoun County schools in the last year. Fighting between girls, fighting between boys, blowjobs at Briar Woods, alcohol in the toilets, teachers posting sexual positions at Wood Grove, law enforcement reporting on sexual assaults and sodomy at Stonebridge, and now at Broad Run. Sexually explicit books describing a 10-year-old boy having fellatio with an adult man. Extremely violent and murderous books describing a black mother killing her daughter. Diversity books showing two young boys kissing on the covers. Books including abduction, torture, and rape. Murals in a classroom about sexuality and preference. Pride flags embedded in school logos on school walls. Teachers bullying students into racial discussion at Freedom High School. Teachers soliciting pronouns and gender identity. Who Turns You On Painted With Gender Sexuality Messages. Who are terrorizing our children? Not the parents. Who is lying to us? Superintendent Ziegler? Anna Iff.
Jo Mobley.
LCPS needs to provide informed consent for its employees and parents in a statement. Please provide for public access. What the FDA-approved name of the vaccine is, as well as the unredacted ingredients. Clarification about if LCPS is responsible for any side effects or possible injury from weekly testing or the vaccine. Citation of the law that LCPS is using to impose weekly testing and/or vaccination statuses from employees and students. The law being used to guide LCPS decision-making regarding requirements for employees and students to provide LCPS personal and private health information and how requiring weekly testing is not undue burden or discriminatory. There also needs to be transparency about how students and employee private health insurance or private health data is protected as well as distributed, especially to parents. LCPS is not, as of right now, providing any employee or parent adequate information to allow for an informed decision and needs to do so in multiple languages for better access.
Jessica Mendez. Colin Doniger.
In addition to being a parent of two children in elementary school here in LCPS, I'm also a yoga teacher and today I'm going to share a little bit of yoga with you guys. Two of our greatest sources of yoga are in the form of epic tales from ancient India. One thing that both of these tales have in common is that they involve a ruler who refuses to listen to the advice of his wise and virtuous counselors. The rulers are completely bind to the fact that they're creating their own suffering and the suffering of their people. Only when it's too late and they brought destruction down on everyone close to them do they realize and regret their error. "If only I would have listened," they said. At what point will this school board and administration create enough suffering and realize that maybe we should listen to the thousands of parents that we're supposed to represent? We say in yoga, "May all beings be happy and freedom, and my thoughts, words, and actions be a contribution to that happiness and freedom." Don't sell our freedom as parents and allow us to make medical decisions for our own children so you can get more COVID money for Ziegler.
Michael Miller.
One minute is not nearly enough time to talk about the frustrations that this community has seen with this board here. Your policies are leading to the safety of our children being in jeopardy. We've seen that just recently come out and you guys tried to stop that to come out. We warned you about policies that you were putting into place that would be a danger to our students and we've seen that happen. When parents drop off their children at school, put them on the bus, they are now in your custody, they're in your care, and it's your policies that could potentially lead them to being put in danger, and it has. We warned you about this when you wanted to pass AD-40 and you didn't listen. And now our children are paying the consequences. When is enough is enough? When are you going to change the policies to keep our children safe?
Sandy Sullivan.
Good afternoon, school board members and Dr. Ziegler. My name is Sandy Sullivan, president of the Loudoun Education Association. LEA's pleased changes to the paid health emergency leave are being considered. A positive COVID test regardless of where the exposure took place would qualify for the leave. 10 days of leave will be provided to employees for each positive COVID test and this leave would be retroactive applied beginning August 24, 2021. These are positive changes you can and should make for your staff in these uncertain times. I'll conclude my remarks by reminding you of a tool which adds value, experience, and productivity to the challenging and complicated situations we face. This vehicle brings experts to the table, your employees, LCPS educators. This constructive decision-making benefits our citizens, our community. LEA looks forward to engaging with you and productive collective bargaining with you in the near future.
Kelly Michonne.
I would like to voice my support for the policy that you're discussing tonight, allowing CBD medication to be administered on school property. I've seen how much it's helped a close friend's young daughter with epilepsy. I would also like to ask the school board to provide more detailed and clear instruction communicated to families on how to test and return their children to school following any COVID symptoms because, as we all well know, everything is a symptom of COVID. There seems to be so much gray area and varied rules from school to school and a financial burden to families when free COVID testing is not readily available and over-the-counter and private testing can cost anywhere from $20 to $200. And our pediatrician's offices are booked solid. We should be testing symptomatic kids at school with rapid tests regardless of vaccination status so they aren't having to miss more school when they aren't truly sick. Please just provide more communication. Thank you.
Ann Miller.
The environment this school board and superintendent have created is absolutely horrific. All of you need to step down immediately. You're reckless and you recklessly endangered the children of this county. You lied and conspired to silence the parents. You went after and maligned the father of a student who was raped in one of your schools. In an effort to pass your policies, you partnered with a Commonwealth attorney and media to silence Mr. Smith and you should be ashamed of yourselves. In doing this, you allow the same sexual predator who assaulted Mr. Smith's child to sexually assault another student this month. Your lies were used by Merrick Garland to try to intimidate and silence parents. This is not China. This is the United States of America and we will not be silenced. You are liable for these injustices. Remove the superintendent immediately and then resign for your negligence and duplicity and this nightmare.
Amy Yar.
Vaping in the classroom, drug use, bullying, disrespecting teachers, destruction of property, verbal assaults, fistfights, sexual assault, and rape. This is just a short list of some terrible things that are happening in Loudoun County public schools on a regular basis. All of these policies you come here and discuss do nothing to combat these issues. In fact, we know you like to sweep these things under the rug. Thanks to that idiot Northam, we all know you don't even need to report sexual assaults, stabbings, drug use, weapons, et cetera, to law enforcement. Thank God for the SROs in place at our schools. They seem to be the only ones who give a damn. That brave young lady who was assaulted at Broad Run last week knew who to go to for help, straight to the SRO. The principal didn't even put out a statement to families until after the sheriff's office released their statement. Is that the only way to bring things to light in our schools? And let's not forget, you put that girl in harms way. You put a known sexual predator in her school after he violently raped another girl at another Loudoun County school. It's obvious that this board doesn't care about our children's education.
Alicia Brand.
What is worse than a child being raped at school? The cover-up by those who are entrusted with the safety and well-being of children. I came in here and I begged this board to put our children first, but how can a bunch of liars and child abusers ever put children first? Today, Scott Ziegler must resign for the unconscionable act of allowing an alleged rapist back into school to rape again and for that cover-up. Brenda, Atousa, Beth, we demand your resignation for complicity in a conspiracy to maliciously and willfully malign Scott Smith to frame him as a white supremacist and parents as domestic terrorists. Scott, Ziegler, and board, your actions stole the dignity away from victims and you are all guilty of the spirit murder of girls. We demand your resignations and with that, let us say, "Let's Go Loudoun County School Board!"
Erin Dunbar.
On May 28th, a male student at Stonebridge allegedly entered the girls' bathroom and raped a female student. One month later, with the board meeting where policy AD-40 was voted on, Beth and Scott and Brenda all assured us that students are safe and there had been no incidents of concern. At this meeting, the father of the raped victim was here to speak about the trauma his daughter suffered, but he never got the chance because Brenda conveniently ended public comment. The boy in question was transferred to Broad Run where last week he took advantage of his continued access to classmates and assaulted another student. This board bans parents from the admin building for not wearing a mask? But a student accused of raping a classmate was allowed to continue attending our children's schools. I have contacted Sheriff Chapman and asked for an investigation into inexcusable handling of this situation and I'm calling for the resignation of the superintendent along with the board, but any board member who has found to have had knowledge of what happened. Any of you who covered up the sexual assault of a child should be charged as an accessory after the fact for knowingly putting other students in danger. You are a direct threat to the safety of our children at LCPS.
Jackie Foster.
None of you are fit to run our schools or decide what is best for our children. It is time you all resign. With the news that broke last night concerning the rape of a student at Stonebridge High School and your blatant cover-up, it became obvious you are not concerned about our children. You only care about your political agenda. You're pushing for CRT. Vaccine mandates, AD-40, pornographic books, and more must stop! This is not what we as parents want, nor is it what our children want. You are all a sad excuse for human beings that should not be responsible for the education of our children. You should be ashamed.
Jeremy Wright.
So now I think it's safe to say that there might have been other motives behind Dr. Ziegler ruling the board meeting on June 22nd, an unlawful assembly, besides clapping. A parent was there to speak out about the sexual assault of his daughter in a bathroom at Stonebridge High School by a transgender student. He claims police were not properly notified of the incident by the schools. God help you all if that's true. Virginia State Code still requires that a report be made to the superintendent when any assault happens, so it was likely Dr. Ziegler knew about it. He stated in that very meeting that he had no record of students being assaulted in bathrooms at LCPS. A blatant lie that rubs salt in a fresh wound that that family endured over this incident. Beth Bartz has stated that students don't need protection, but that was a lie too because the same offender recently sexually assaulted another young lady in a separate incident at Broad Run. Dr. Ziegler, the community is still waiting on your statement regarding the connection between these two incidents and what changes you plan to make to prevent any more students from being hurt or for your...
Sorry, your time is up. Luria Villa.
Thursday is my last day as an employee because I do not accept that any employer owns my body. I will not accept your totalitarian leadership and your actions to strip employees, students, and parents of our God-given and constitutionally enshrined rights. I will not give up the rights of free speech, religion, medical freedom, and medical privacy. For eight years, I've worked in the neglected Department of Student Health Services. A relatively few people have been asked to do the extraordinary workloads for the most medically fragile of the student population. If any of your mandates are about safety, why have the needs of this department been ignored during a pandemic? From August 2020 till now, there has been a 78% turnover in the resource nurse positions. Since the start of this school year, there's been approximate 40% turnover in the health office staff at the school level. People who get the COVID shot are still capable of getting and transmitting COVID, making them no different than those who do not get the shot. You allow at-home COVID test results for students but not for staff. Why the hypocrisy? I submit this is not about safety, it is about control and coercion is not consent.
Donna Russell.
The recent 60-minute segment on the negative impact of social media on teenagers was incomplete, not including information on the enormous impact that social media has had on the rise in transgender identifying young people. Lisa Littman of Brown University, in her study on the staggering spike in gender dysphoria, especially in girls, noted that 65% who suddenly discovered their transgender identity did so after a period of prolonged social media immersion. Teenagers struggle with the changes that happen to them in adolescence. Surely you remember. Today, you might get this reason for your discomfort, you were born in the wrong body. One detransitioner, Benji, discovered YouTube and Tumblr videos of women gushing over their transformation into men. Feeling unfeminine and awkward in her body, she found the possibility of change exhilarating, equating cross-sex hormones and gender surgery with salvation. Now she is convinced that the trans-identified teens are being hurt by a system that fast-tracks their demands without regard for their actual welfare. LCPS has made itself part of that system.
Joel Caruso.
I'm not a terrorist. I spent countless nights in the Pentagon digging through rubble after 9/11. I know what terrorism looks like. I brought my kids here to show you who I'm fighting for. If CRT is not in the schools, why did teachers spend the last three years being trained in My time is short, so I'm going off script a little bit. We just had a staff member catch COVID after being fully vaccinated. This is not the first time. We know this. Okay? Mandating vaccines and testing only for unvaccinated is science. It's called political science. It's not medical science. How much are these kids worth? Thousand? A million? 10 million? These guys are priceless. 10 million, that means they're 125 apiece. 20 million, that means they're 250 apiece. They're priceless. Thank you for your time and God bless.
Yulia Weatherman.
Okay, so from Loudoun County Sheriff's Office, and I quote, "A teenager from Ashburn has been charged with sexual battery and abduction of a fellow student at Broad Run High School. The investigation determined, on the afternoon of October 6th, the 15-year-old suspect forced the victim into an empty classroom where he held her against her will and inappropriately touched her." Got the pronouns? So this is tragic. It's every parent's nightmare, but Mrs. Bartz thinks otherwise. She wrote in her blog back in June, "We have heard from members of the public concerns that with the new bathroom policy, girls will not be safe. There is no data that supports this fear. Sexual assaults are much more likely to occur on a date with someone your young teen knows." You're wrong, Ms. Bartz. Girls are still not safe with or without your new policy. So what's your next move, school board? Investigate the case, investigate the principal, implement more mandates, maybe we should call just FBI on the parents of Loudoun County? I don't know. Seems like you care more about your enrollment numbers, your mandates, and intimidated parents. So that's too bad.
Asia Heremek.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, as if you had a choice. First, disclaimer, I am not a violent... am not a violent tread to this board, and you do not need FBI protection from me. Unlike you, I've never tried to silent intimidate or trend parents that are trying to exercise the First Amendment right. I, however, am really familiar with tactics you've been using to implement your agenda. I came to this country 20 years ago, 23 years ago. As a young woman who was born and raised in the communist tax Yugoslavia, I also watched it fail miserably. I am here to tell you I know exactly what you're doing. Stalin would be proud of you. I am also here to remind you that you are public servants, and if you are scared of doing your jobs, it might be time for you to make way for more courageous people who serve the public. Thank you very much.
Zhi Xiaozeng. Tiffany Polifko.
You do not care about our children. You care about you. Ziegler, any complicit school board members, pact demands your resignation. Covering your own butts from the scrutiny of the NAACP is more important to you than saying no to teaching staff, our children, to either self-loathe or be victims based on the color of their skin? It's more important for lying Lindsay Orem to scrub her Twitter page and hide evidence of critical race theory and social emotional learning than to have to answer to parents who don't want to co-parent with the government. Hiding evidence from every parent in LCPS about a heinous sexual assault of a student that occurred in a bathroom so you could pass radical policy 8040 is more important to you than protecting the dignity and safety of our children against the likelihood of a repeat occurrence? Ziegler, complicit school board members, step down.
Teresa Lieberman.
Accountability is sorely lacking from LCPS, from students to the superintendents and ultimately to the school board. Perhaps if students were held accountable for their actions, the lives of two young women would not have been irrevocably changed. I know for a fact that the boy who allegedly raped these two girls was just hanging out in the cafeteria when he should have been in class, and teachers simply just said, "Well, you should get to class." Did nothing was happen. This happened for weeks. Nothing happened. Repeated offenses like this should result in suspension or expulsion, not turning blind eye. Then when the first attack happened, rather than expulsion, he was just sent on to another school. When the Catholic Church passed predator priests from parish to parish, the walls thankfully eventually came crashing down on them, and they were finally held accountable for their complicity in the abuse. When is Dr. Ziegler and this board going to be held accountable? What did you think was going to happen when you pushed porn into the classrooms and into the libraries and let boys into the girls' bathrooms?
Austin Levine.
First, let me thank Brenda for the Fort Knox-style security and the pat-down. The guy deserves a tip, and I need a cigarette. Secondly, let me also thank Ms. Corbo for flying back from North Dakota. I'm glad you were able to overcome the planes, trains, and automobiles to make it back to your Zoom room. We would say we miss you, but we have never seen you. Ms. Reeser, posting articles where parents are called terrorists for speaking up for their children is wrong. The comparison is wrong, and you are wrong. To compare us to Hamas, ISIS, the KKK, and the anti-racist of Loudoun County Facebook group is below you. Are you taking lessons from Beth on how to manage social media and deal with parents? Mr. Morse, I don't think I ever mentioned your name, but you, sir, are the winner of the 2021 John Kerry Flip-Flop Award. Thank you for being against it before you were for it on every issue there is. Lastly, where's our anti-Semitic proclamation? What's going on? Do you really hate the Jews? Isn't it time to do something? Are we not important to you? Get some klatzpa and do something.
Linda Killen.
How can a sexual predator quietly be transferred out of one high school after being charged with sexually assaulting a girl and transferred into another? It only took 27 school days for this student to assault another victim, a school that has 800 girls. June 22nd, Bartz asked if anyone knew assaults in LCPS, and you all sat there and didn't mention a word about the May 28th assault. Why didn't any of you stand up and speak up? You all should feel guilty for the second girl who was assaulted. You allowed this to happen when you allowed the predator to re-enter LCPS. Here are items I want you to consider. One, where will the student return once his suspension concludes, and what safety measures are you putting in place once he returns? Two, a mandated policy should be implemented to report all assaults to the sheriff's office instead of being handled in-house. Three, was direct supervision put in place over the attacker moved to Broad Run High School pursuant to policy 8290, Reg E2C, and if not, why not? Was there, why was the student not put into the Alternative Education Program per Virginia Code 22.1-dash-277.2? You guys failed. Sexual assaults happening in public schools is inexcusable and should never happen. This should have zero...
Abby Platt.
There's something seriously wrong. When you can get banned from a Loudoun County public building for not wearing a mask, but an individual that rapes and sodomizes a 14-year-old girl in a bathroom does not. There is something seriously wrong with a system that prioritizes rape, reporting a rape internally to the superintendent so that they can control the narrative instead of calling the police. There is something seriously wrong with a principal that calls the police on an angry dad because he loses his ever-loving mind when he's called to pick up his child from the school after she's been raped. There's something seriously wrong with this school board that goes to such great lengths to silence the parents who are standing in this hall and outside this building. We continue to be so angry.
Stephanie Markey.
Never in history has a vaccine been mandated for a virus with a recovery rate of 99%. Never in history has a child's participation in activities been tied to an injection of a substance. Never have we gone from heralding teachers as heroes to firing them if they don't choose injections against their will. Never have we tested individuals for a virus when they are showing no symptoms of being sick. Never have we uttered the absurd statement, "The vaccinated must be protected from the unvaccinated." Just say no to drugs. My body, my choice. Medical freedom, body autonomy. You grant us a precious minute of your time to comment, yet you don't listen. You are sanctioning the destruction of the most precious rights we have as humans. You manipulate the data to suit your cause, which of course has its underpinning in money. We will not relent until you are exposed for this hideous money grab at the expense of our children and teachers who simply want to make their own choices about their health. You may fester in your hypocrisy, but we will press on to expose your corruption. Freedom is too...
Your time is up, ma'am. Daniel Brubaker.
I'd like to talk with you about student safety. It's alleged that LCPS covered up the sexual assault of a young girl at school, and that on your watch, a second girl was assaulted by the same boy. What's more, it now seems possible, at least, that the shutdown of public comment at the June 22nd meeting may have been engineered to prevent the father of the girl from speaking, lest it harm the optics as you voted to pass policy 8040. My main topic today, however, is on the matter of gun-free zones. They're among the most dangerous places in America. Empirically speaking, mass shootings occur almost without exception in so-called gun-free zones. The reason is not hard to understand. No mass shooter wants to act where someone might shoot back. You all know that putting a sign on the door banning guns does not work because we've learned, because we've learned that you put a bid in for bulletproof glass in this building that is already quote-unquote "protected" by the policy of being gun-free. Whatever our criticisms are, we want all of you to be safe, but there is a bit of inconsistency there if the... Yeah, thank you.
Rachel Slife.
I stand here opposed to all medical mandates you are imposing. First, the masks are useless in stopping the spread, are covered in germs, and actually harm the child more than protect them. Get rid of the masks. Second, as of last week, 478 out of 4.8 million cases, these are kids, since March of 2020 have died from or with COVID. That is a case fatality rate of 0.009% in ages of 0 through 17. Natural immunity has been shown to be robust and longstanding with negligible reinfection rates. Third, 1 in 9 ages, children in ages 12 to 15, experience severe adverse reactions to the Pfizer vaccine during Phase 2, 3 trials. If you mandate these injections, you will see healthy children die, develop life-shortening myocarditis, or have permanent disability. Is your conscience prepared for that? It is not a matter of if, but when. Where there is risk, there must be choice. If they must test a...
Randall James. Kylie Gann.
Across the country, some parents are being targeted for speaking out about the education of their children. Some would argue that parents are not content area specialists and that they should leave it to the professionals. I think this is extremely unwise. We have parents who are teachers, administrators, and principals, parents who are sanitation and construction workers, small business owners, and stay-at-home moms and dads. Their experience and knowledge is an asset to all of Loudoun. It is a disservice to our students to suggest that our LCPS parents should not be involved in deciding what is being taught in schools. In fact, this very issue is protected by the Code of Virginia. Code 1-240.1 Title Rights of Parents reads, "A parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child. Please follow the Code of Virginia to ensure that parents are making the decisions for their children concerning education and care. Parent voices must be heard." Thank you.
Susanna Lee.
Hello. I have a child in 3rd grade here in LCPS, and I just have to say that we do have some amazing teachers over at Kenneth Clubbert Elementary School. We've had a wonderful experience there. But I am here because I'm a parent who wants to have a say in my child's education, and I am so grateful that parents have really began to show up and take a stand for their children. Scott Smith wanted to say, "In his daughter's education and in his daughter's life," but he was let down, he was vilified, he was lied about as he tried to protect his precious little girl. With your positions come great responsibility, and you're continuing to fail us all. So we will keep fighting. Thank you.
Jacqueline Genevieve. Talia Bush. Mary Gonzalez.
You have failed in representing our public school system. You have failed in doing what's best for our children at every step of the way. And lastly, you have failed in simply being a human being. So let me count the ways. First, you have mandatory and unnecessary masking and illegally mandating the vaccine for children, which could harm them. Shelving inappropriate books accessible to minors. Turning your head to violent sexual crimes in Loudoun County, Loudoun County Public Schools without any accountability. Creating widespread learning loss. Labeling parents as domestic terrorists. And lastly, my favorite, making Loudoun County Public Schools the laughingstock of this nation. What a legacy. Thank you.
Nathan Bailey. Jackie Garb.
I am totally opposed to the vaccine mandate for athletes and staff. It's a violation of medical privacy to force disclosure of a vaccination status. It's a violation of an individual's right to choose what they put in their bodies. There are known health risks to getting the COVID-19 vaccine. It has already injured and killed many. According to Open Vares website, there are 770,000 reports of injury related to this vaccine, 23,000 permanently disabled, 7,800 heart attacks, and 16,000 deaths. Natural immunity is real. It's proven to be more effective than the vaccine, and for some reason, you are totally ignoring that fact. And now it's proven that with the vaccine, you can still get and spread the COVID-19 virus. Please terminate the plans to mandate the vaccine.
Gwen Armstrong.
Bullying. Pervasive at the top. I've been watching different forms of this bullying from the board to the administrators to staff for over 20 years. Prime example is how the board treated parents on social media. My question to you is how do you expect our children not to bully when we ourselves set the example? Let us focus on what schools should be about, excellence in reading, writing, and arithmetic, as opposed to raising up controversial dogmas that affect our students. I don't believe that focusing on what divides us is in any of our best interests, but if we set our sights on loving our neighbor as ourselves and to treat others the way that we would want to be treated, I believe we would see positive change. Thank you.
Catherine Young.
Hello, my name is Katie Young, and I am a student at Wood Grove High School. I love my peers, and I would never do anything to hurt them, but at some point, a line must be drawn when it comes to privacy and safety. You both allow and encourage that line to be crossed. 8040 and many policies being proposed are not to make people more comfortable or to accept others, but instead to change the way my peers and I think, so that we will become the next generation of social justice warriors. Our schools are becoming over-politicized as we shift focus from objective truth to subjective feelings and political correctness. I am 14 years old. The fact that I have to be here to fight for my rights to not have your radical agenda shoved down my throat in school is not only concerning, it's upsetting. My peers and I are not tools to further your political agenda, but we are people with our own diverse ethics and beliefs. I'd appreciate if you started recognizing that.
Megan R.
I'm here to call for the immediate resignation of Scott Ziegler. Myself and several others have already contacted law enforcement to report your criminal activity. Unlike us concerned parents whom you have sicced the FBI on, you are actually responsible for covering up criminal activity inside LCPS buildings. In a recent school board meeting, Beth Bartz posed a seemingly canned question whether there is a history of assault in bathrooms, when now we all know that that is definitely true, to which Ms. Sheridan, Ms. Ellis, Ms. Jones, and you, Mr. Ziegler, all denied being having any knowledge of that. That student has now committed a second crime at school. Hypocrisy highlight reel, please. A month ago, you had a marching band unmasked, blowing their horns all over this room, just moments before the public came in to deliver their comments, and must wear their masks. Last meeting, Ms. Bartz praised Mr. Ziegler for being so responsive at all hours. Mr. Ziegler, it's been a month, and I still haven't heard from you. You locked us out, the ones paying for this building and your seats, outside in the heat, now progressing cold and wet weather, as a way to prohibit us from participating in public comment. You flip-flop and change times all...
No, I are.
With liberty and justice for all, you just spoke those words a little more than an hour ago, but I wonder if you actually know what they mean. Whether it is a mask and vaccine mandates, policy 8040 that contradicts basic biology, pornographic material pushed on our children as educational reading, or racist teachings labeled as equity training, you're clearly supporting an agenda and policies that are anti-liberty, anti-justice, and certainly anti-American. Replacing parental control with government control of education has been a goal of authoritarians from the beginning. After all, it is much easier to ensure obedience if someone has been raised to think of the government as the source of all wisdom and truth, as well as the provider of all life's necessities. In contrast to an authoritarian society, a free society recognizes that parents have both the responsibility and the right to provide their children with a quality education that reflects the parent's values. School boards who force teachers to use their positions to indoctrinate children in beliefs that contradict the views of the parents are the ones overstepping their bounds. Restoring parental control of education should be a priority for all who believe in liberty. If government can override the wishes of parents in the name of education or protecting children's health, then... then-
Adam R. Sir, your time is up. Please yield the mic to the next speaker. Adam.
Good evening. I am- Last time I spoke, you said that I need- that you- that I said that you need to listen to me because I am the one that you're forcing these mandates on. About a month ago, you put me in quarantine. I thought that that would have been it with the masks, but it was not even close to being over. Talk about bullying. There are people in my school that yell at me, yes, yell at me for not wearing my mask. Another fifth grader had the same situation as me, tested positive for COVID with someone who was within three feet of him. Unlike me, he was able to return back to school without quarantining. I know that you all get paid for how much you enforce masks, but please forget about the money and care about students. Also, please stop using me and my friends as test subjects for masks.
Why are all these seats here if we're not allowed? Ted Williamson. I'm called the next speaker, Ted Williamson. Please exit so the next speaker may speak. Please yield the mic to the next speaker. The public- I've read the public comment prior to the meeting beginning, and the members of the public will be allowed in after public comment is completed. Please exit the room so the next speaker may have his turn. Ted Williamson, it is your turn to speak.
I was planning on commenting tonight on the recent events and the disgusting lies that have been told that have led to actual physical harm. But since that has been explained by many others already, I thought I'd rather use this time to inform you of my intent to support school choice, perhaps more than anything I've ever supported in my life. It's too late for my children, as they'll be out of school soon. My focus shall be on my grandchildren, who aren't born yet, that they will be able to choose either private or government schools and that the tax dollars will follow them. I think that's the only way to derail the toxic engine now rolling down the track. My hope is that your legacy is not policy 80-40, but instead, the absolute demise of government schools as we know them.
Diana Sosa.
Good evening. My name is Diana Sosa, and I have three kids that went to Loudoun County. I have one left in the school system. I also work for a school system. And I'm really appalled at the behavior that I've seen with the school board, the superintendent. And I'm asking for resignation at this point. You cannot come against parents who just want the best for their kids. It is unacceptable. I work in a school to try to promote safety. And when I read what happened to two students, not just one, and the school board and Dr. Ziegler knew what happened to this young lady, and you guys did not protect this young lady, it's unexcusable. I'm a school social worker. I'm proud of that. This would never have happened on my watch. And I ask for your resignations if you're not going to promote safety, security, and having this critical race theory is-
To May Harding.
The man with the clipboard called out number 60, the number I was given by you. I guess I can call that my government name today. You're paid four armed guards, then patted me down, and I was put in a line outside the locked doors of LCPS administration building along with the other numbers. He then unlocked the door, hurting our group of 10 inside, and motioned to the dots on the floor, the dots that we were expected to compliantly walk as 10 armed guards paced the room, their eyes on my body, looking me up and down. I entered this building a number today, number 60. Just as it was mispronounced last meeting, today you mispronounced my name again. Are you listening? I was the one at the last meeting who asked you to just listen. And I, as well as all others present today, will keep coming back until you listen. You are our representatives, once trusted and elected by your districts. Do your job, listen to our concerns, represent us all. Don't treat us like political prisoners.
Gary Higgins.
Hello again, I'm Gary Higgins. So now, parents that speak out against policies and the school board are domestic terrorists. Do you agree with this? The VSBA doesn't agree with this, and they said they do not seek involvement of federal law enforcement in local decisions. Will you go on record against it? I bet not, because you closed our schools for 18 months, eliminated class rank, and advanced diplomas, quotas in the Academies of Science that backfired, lowered math requirements, reduced access to Dr. Seuss while continuing to supply sexually explicit materials to children, implemented divisive critical race theory under the guise of equity, put boys in the girls' locker room, lowered actual enrollment by 3,000 students in Virginia's fastest-growing county, and now you've imposed a vaccine mandate on athletes when a temperature check suffices in most healthcare situations. Check it out, most of your scholarships come from athletics. Destroy athletics, and you destroy your scholarships.
Joyce Thompson. Renee Camp.
Our God is able to do exceedingly abundantly more than we can ask or imagine, and have us- and we have asked Him to save our children from corruption and a corrupt school board. And He hears our prayers because He says His grace is sufficient for us. Yesterday, the Daily Wire detailed a shocking story in Loudoun County School- about Loudoun County School, covering up the sexual assault about a teenage girl. And then you make her father look like he is a terrorist, and he spread all over the news. Are we enemies to you? You aim to destroy our children and their innocence with your transgender socialist agenda and forced mandates. We aim to defend them. You are spreading idolatry, hatred, fornication, uncleanliness, selfish ambition, wrath, and strife. And those that do this will not inherit the kingdom of heaven. No weapon formed against the children or parents of this county or any school will prosper. And we condemn any tongue that comes up against or rises against- and comes up in just judgment in Jesus's name for any child or parent.
Heather Applegate. Is it time? Sorry. Dr. Ziegler, my name is Heather Applegate. Please read my husband's letter. The scientific literature for the COVID-19 vaccine continues to grow and shows the vaccines cause more damage than they prevent. There's now an October peer-reviewed study highlighting the risks to young people, and three countries just abandoned the Moderna. The CDC claims zero evidence of death. This is nonsense. It takes months to collect medical charts, lab, and autopsy results, and death certificates prior to even conducting a review. There's no way they could draw conclusions about these deaths so quickly. This is malfeasance. Data on adults show that 50% who die do so within 48 hours and 80% within a week. If this were coincidence, deaths after the vaccine would be more evenly distributed. At this rate, and with the clear myocarditis signal, the numbers for children will be staggering. I'll end with a quote from a Harvard professor of medicine about the vaccine. Sometimes I wish I were a chemist, and then I could just be quiet. But I happen to have spent a couple of decades doing research on infectious disease outbreaks and also in vaccine safety. I don't see how I can be silent. Thank you. Amy Paul.
I've come here several times now, probably 10, and spoken to you all. I've had very carefully-prepared statements. Tonight, I have nothing. I am speechless at what I've seen from this board. It is beyond comprehension what you all are doing. So I want to echo the woman who came just a few before me and say, in the wake of this new information, it is time for all of you to step down. Just step down and give us a clean start. Give this county a fresh start. You keep telling us that you're all about the safety of our students. It's such lies and hypocrisy. Your policy 80-40, you said, was because LGBTQ students were being bullied. In fact, Mr. Serotkin, you gave Mr. Morris a hard time about his vote against that. But you already had an anti-bullying policy on the books. You just weren't enforcing it. You didn't need 80-40 if you just enforced what already was on the books. All your stuff about safety is lies based on the vaccine mandates and now the safety of girls in bathrooms. Please step down.
Erin Thomas.
Is it true LCPS covered up the May 28 sexual assault on Scott Smith's 15-year-old daughter at Stonebridge High School? Is it true LCPS wanted to handle it in-house and not call it in local law enforcement when this assault happened on school property? Is it true the perpetrator identified as bisexual and thus under policy 80-40's cover was allowed to commit a second crime at Broad Run High School on October 6 against another 15-year-old girl as she was forced into an empty classroom and sexually attacked? Who is protecting our children? Apparently not you. Beth Bartz, you were recorded saying, "Our students do not need to be protected, and they are not in danger." Really? Under Virginia Code 22.1, "A principal and division superintendent who knowingly failed to comply with reporting requirements shall be subject to sanctions, including a demotion or dismissal. The truth will be revealed, and we, the parents, will restore justice to this county." School board and Scott Ziegler, resign now.
Jennifer Shutt.
Good evening. I would like to speak regarding information item 12.01, HRTD Committee Paid Health Emergency Leave Policy. As this policy is currently written, it is unusable. I have been vaccinated and wear a mask while at school, practice social distancing when possible, and wash my hands regularly. I also work with some students who are unmasked for some or all of the school day, and all are unvaccinated because I work in elementary. Despite these precautions, I contracted COVID and had to take three weeks of my personal sick leave. I feel that this current emergency leave policy is unfair and needs to be revised as discussed, eliminating the exposure occurred at the workplace requirement. Please revise this policy retroactively to the beginning of the school year for the fairness and equity of all LCPS staff. Thank you.
Beth Ma.
Good evening. I stand before you as a previous successful pharmaceutical sales representative who understands how big pharma works or doesn't. As a pharma rep, we know it takes at least 10 years of research and development to get a drug to market, if it ever does make it past stringent clinical and safety trials. Not six months of R&amp;D, as in the COVID vaccine, before use was approved. As reps, we know and use a package insert required by the FDA to be in with our drugs, to answer questions about dosing and side effects with our physicians before they prescribe it. Patients then know the risks versus benefits before choosing for themselves to take a medicine. Patient's choice. There is a blank PI inside the COVID vaccines missing on the important trial and safety data. The mandatory vaccine takes out the physician's supervision, an important step- important safety step, and does not take into account each patient's DNA makeup and how their bodies will react. You don't go get an MMR vaccine or a chickenpox vaccine at your local pharmacy. Your child gets those vaccines under a doctor's supervision, and-
Suzanne Satterfield.
Atusa noted on June 8 that Ziegler served as the chaplain at the Virginia Beach Police Department. She also stated, "It's a high-stress environment where people look to you for leadership and a moral compass." Sadly, the needle on Ziegler's moral compass has flown off. The school board's moral compass is also broken as the majority of them stand arm-in-arm with the superintendent. He's lied repeatedly about CRT and its likeness in LCPS. He supports keeping important information about children from their parents, as noted in 80-40. He supports the sexually explicit and graphic books in our schools. He wants to spend $3 million for bulletproof windows in the admin building, yet he won't protect students from those that sexually assault them in their classrooms and bathrooms. Ziegler's lost his way from when he was a chaplain 18 years ago. He, along with many school board members, put their political agendas first and put students' education and well-being last. It's time for Mr. Ziegler and the school board to get the needle back on the moral compass and/or resign.
Tori Walden.
I didn't have anything prepared today. I signed up literally at 3:55 this afternoon because I had text after text from friend after friend who said, "Hey, you share a lot about the school board. Do you know what's happening? Why is this in the local news? Why is this in the national news? Is this really true?" Yes, this is true. Our school board doesn't listen to our parents. Our superintendent doesn't keep its children safe. I shouldn't have to worry about sending my high school daughter to school that she'll not be hurt at school, that she'll not be exposed to something that we deem inappropriate in our household. There's part of me that wants to keep her home, and there's part of me that wants her to go out and be that example of something better to her fellow classmates, to her teachers, to be the salt and light to the world. And you guys are making it impossible. Please.
Can you confirm that our in-person is complete? Thank you. Board members will now move to our virtual speaker list. Erin, when you are ready. Our first speaker is Reginald Parker. Renard Parker. Erin, I'm having difficulty hearing you. Renard Parker. Ashley Milewski. Ashley, go ahead. We'll move to Julia Holcomb.
Julia Holcomb is here.
Go ahead.
We can do better by the memory and the legacy of the late Ms. King than to appoint her former appointees to her place. I'm disappointed that some of you voted for her in the end- for Hoiler in the end, after supporting Catrice Nolan. I urge all the members of the board to work to find and support highly-qualified and experienced candidates for the position who represent the best goals of the Loudoun County Public Schools and who will both embody and advance the ideals of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We can do better than Mr. Hoiler. I'm sure he has many sterling virtues, but I am also sure that we can do better. Thank you.
Jessica Gordon.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me, okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, yes. Hi, I'm- hi, guys. Hi. I recut the internet, and I don't know how I cut things up for virtual, but they won't let me ask. Uh, you guys should know. Um, my name is Jessica Gordon. I was adopted on June 22. As you guys know, Mr. Ziegler, I did email you with parents on twice now. I want to ask the school board, how do you pay your personal security to yourself when knowing that parents could assault us on your property? You don't have security for us. If you don't- if you don't- if you don't trust Loudoun County Police Department, then why should we? Get the SROs out of our office. I have every bit of patience that you guys need. Get at me. Get at me.
Carrington Cunnington? Carrington, it's your turn to speak. Amanda Schallant? Natasha Grover?
Everyone wants to talk about assembling Ms. Bart lately. They need to know that the real menace is you, Brenda Sheridan. You have always been the ringleader to promote and protect every sexually disgusting book, video, and policy being foisted upon the students. You've got teacher Timothy Greening showing scenes of video on how to sexually stimulate a pig and how far a man can ejaculate. You've got librarians putting grass now with illustrations of Bellatio into school libraries. And worst of all, you've got a principal covering up for a male sexual predator in his skirt. You banned parents such as myself from this building for 10 months because we wouldn't wear some silly face cloth. But you won't ban someone who sodomized a 14-year-old girl in a school bathroom. You sicced, twisted, swine. It blows my mind that anyone with that brain in this county will trust this board with the safekeeping and education of their children. I wouldn't even trust you with my thoughts.
Gina Wiser?
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Hello. Despite FDA-approved B-18 vaccines, so far, child and will wait for the next few years. Therefore, we do not have the long-term safety data as you cannot pass that long-term safety study, period. According to vigor, uh, right now, there have been close to 800,000 reports of adverse events reacting to the Tootie deaths directly associated with being infected. And according to a HARP study, only 1% of injuries are even reported to bears. And God only knows what that data will affect the next few years. That- those signs matter to- science has shown us over and over again that natural immunity is far more robust and superior than any chemical and genetic therapy. If this were truly about health, then natural immunity would get public. These vaccines only supposedly help said individual severity. They do not stop transmission nor infection. Risk of cases is a fancy word for vaccine failure. You do not have the right to condone the rights to your own health.
Brian Davison?
Good evening. I want to say this to the school board representative from Riverside. You mentioned that you didn't want to have any, um, discussion or negativity. You hear what I'm saying? I live in your neighborhood. This school board, when a 13-year-old girl was sexually assaulted by a health test teacher in a locked classroom, they ignored it. Sheridan ignored it. Bart ignored it. Morris ignored it. I have to be- It's a 13-year-old girl, the child of a single parent. The teacher failed to polygraph whether he touched her bare vagina. And you sit there worried more about conflict than your classmates. Felix Polatello is teaching right now in Civic Ridge Middle School, preying on other students, and you, as a student, don't care. The statistics show that somebody you know will be assaulted. And you couldn't care less to use your voice, speak up, and Brenda, and say, "Get him out now." Why don't you just turn your head and tell Brenda, "Move, Felix"?
Ian Pryor?
Hello, Mr. Hoiler. Congratulations on your appointment. If your optics indicate that you will listen to our voice and be part of the solution and not part of the problem, my advice to you, do what the friends. To those that supported Mr. Hoiler, did the right thing by resisting blatant political pressure taken from his feet. Now do the right thing again. Fire Scott Ziegler. He either knew about a sexual assault and lied about it, or he didn't know it was an incompetent school. And if he knew about the sexual assault, and you knew about the sexual assault on May 28, did nothing to keep this predator away from our children, resign or join Ms. Bart's support. To those left, still put children over politics. Step up, find your inner leader, and tell Brenda Sheridan, "Shove it." I'll be back first in two weeks, and I'm going to prove transparency and justice.
Board members, staff has informed you that Amanda Schallant was actually in the room, and so we're going to go back to her because that was an error on our part. Amanda, go ahead.
Good evening, board. I am speaking today because I'm absolutely disgusted by LCPS's prioritization of woke policies and political grants given over education, which has brought us to this current awful state. I hope you all got a good look at my sign at the start of today's meeting that stated in big, bold letters, "LCPS Protect Rapists." Because that's exactly what happened. I'm just horrified that you had attempted to cover up the rape of a child in a school bathroom, protected a rapist over a victim, vilified her father, and put countless other children at risk as we've seen from the second sexual assault by the same perpetrator. I call for the immediate resignations of Dr. Ziegler and each and any of you that had knowledge of the rape. You've covered up the rape of a minor, and you promoted a dangerous environment for these children. You need to roll back these unsafe policies and focus on education or resign. This tragedy is absolutely on your hands. Now, what are you going to do about it?
Erin, can you confirm all public comment has been called for virtual, correct?
Oh, we have one more. Carrington Cunnington.
Did you say Carrington Cunnington? I called Carrington earlier.
Uh, correct, they were in the room.
They were there, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, well, and well, our final speaker will be Carrington Cunnington. Thank you, Erin.
I'm speaking with you today to implore you to repeal policy 8040. This policy does not protect children or youth at risk. It harms all students by pushing non-scientific, non-biological, demonstrable non-truths, and limiting gender-confused students in where they can go for help. If you want to see the population of gender-confused students grow, policy 8040 is a great way to start. The current school board has been a disaster for Loudoun County. My family moved here from Illinois in the summer of 2019. We had great- heard great things about Loudoun Public Schools, but our experience upon arrival immediately gave us pause. Besides the lax expectations and complete lack of rigor in the classroom, we found that pornographic smut is apparently this county's best attempt at literature. What I once hoped was an egregious misstep has proven to be the launchpad for a mind-boggling tenure of criminal activities, shameless self-promotion, and horrifying indifference to real student suffering. How dare you sit on that dais and claim to work on behalf of students? You are a blight on our county and our schools. Ms. Bart, I live in Leesburg, but make no mistake, you do not represent me.
Erin, can you confirm now that we've- thank you. Confirmed by your video. Board members, as we talked in the beginning, we are going back to a closed session at this time, and I will ask Ms. Reeser to make the motion to convene the closed meeting.
I move that the Loudoun County School Board recess this public meeting.